So we're ready to start, I believe?
We are ready now. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Welcome to the Hickman Mills School District Forum, March 22nd, 2022, 7:00 to 8:30. This forum is cosponsored by the League of Women Voters of Kansas City, Jackson, Clay, and Platte Counties, and by the South Kansas City Alliance. John Sharp from the Alliance will now say a few words.
Well, thank you very much. I'd just like to thank the League of Women Voters for having this important forum. The League always conducts these very professionally. There's never any sense of bias in any way, and they are really educational for our voters. So thank you so much for doing this for our Hickman Mills community, and I'd also like to thank all the candidates for the school board for being willing to volunteer their time to serve on the board, because I really do think it is probably one of the most, if not the most, important local public office we have. So thank you for your willingness to serve, and thank you for allowing us to co-sponsor this.
Thank you, John. I am Tommy Sexton, the moderator for tonight. I am a member of this League of Women Voters, but I do not live or vote in this district. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization. It does not screen nor endorse candidates. We are issue-oriented, and after careful study, and when consensus is reached, we lobby for our position at the appropriate level of government. We strive to be informed voters and encourage everyone else to do the same. Our membership is open to everyone. We are here for this voter education event to provide an opportunity for you to ask questions and listen as the candidates present their positions. Please email your questions for the candidates to our question sorters, Viola Maxwell and Anitra Steele, at forums@leagueofwomenvoterslwbkc.org. Again, that's forums@lwbkc.org. All the candidates have been invited to participate in our forum tonight. We welcome and appreciate these candidates that are here with us. Beth Ann Berger, Cecil, may I say Watry, is that actually correct?
Yes, that's correct.
John Charles Carmichael, is that correct? I would like for you all to know the other League members volunteering with me tonight. Our timekeeper is Misty Jaeger. Our Zoom board is monitored by Janelle Sweet. Our candidates who will have 90 seconds to respond to your questions. Candidates, you may finish your sentence when the time is up and the timekeeper tells you, but please adhere to the agreed-upon times. Please answer the question asked and stick to the topic. There will be no rebuttals. You can go back to an issue during your closing remarks. The candidates will be responding in a random order, rotation determined by this grid. I'll show it to you. I've had to adjust it. Now we've gone to three people, so you can see how complicated it is, hoping not to have people always follow the same one or start at the same, start each question the same. The candidates will be responding in this random order, and now we're going to begin. The questions will be in general in nature, but most will center around five broad categories that include student health and safety, budget, school board meeting guidelines, curriculum, and current education bills in the Missouri Legislature. We'll begin the first question. This will be for John, and I'll just say, Mr. Carmichael, perhaps, will answer this question. So listen for when it's your turn. Why are you running for the Hickman Mills School Board, and what particular experiences or skills have prepared you to serve as a board member?
I'm running because I'm concerned for the students, the welfare of the students. That's my chief concern, and that's the lighthouse, if you will, in regards to making decisions. I have been an educator for 44 years. I taught in high schools, and I also taught in universities. In my university role, I was a trainer of student teachers, a supervisor, and I evaluated them to let them out to the world. And once they were out in the world, I would also be available as a mentor and a evaluator again. I've evaluated numerous programs. I've even evaluated schools. I have served as an adjudicator and have worked very closely with students and teachers alike, as well as administrators, to try and achieve the most positive environment in which the students can learn. And I do think that the environment in which the students are taught, is taught, is critical to their ability to learn within that environment. So the environment needs to be correct from the very beginning for students to learn well.
Thank you. Thank you. Mrs. Berger?
Yes, I decided to run for school board because I care about my community, first of all. But second, I have 22 years' experience in school finance and budget. Twelve of those are at Grandview School District, where I worked directly under the Assistant Superintendent of Budget and Finance. And there, we can took care of everything for all of the schools. They just submitted it to the Board of Ed, and we took care of all of accounting and student activity money and everything. But then, I got a job at the Kansas City School District as a school bookkeeper. And there, I worked in the elementary schools, at a Montessori school, and at Southeast High School. And I worked with students, even though I was a bookkeeper and took care of their student activity money. I worked with the principals and administration to facilitate the spending of the budget and make sure that the staff and students had what they needed to provide a good education and a good learning environment.
Thank you. Mr. Watry?
Well, hello. My name is Cecil Watry. I'm currently a board director at Hickman Mills, C-1 School District, and I'm running for reelection, which is hence the reason why I'm here. Professionally, I am a clinical social worker. I specialize in micro, meso, and macro social work, which macro social work tends to involve school, yeah, social policy. So I am also a professor at UMKC School of Social Work. I teach systemic oppression as well as human behavior in a social environment. My history, or in Hickman, I was a transitional case manager for the Behavioral Alternative School, as well as for Urban Learning Center. I worked with our students with social emotional skills, as well as assisting teachers with their ability to address our students from a trauma-informed perspective. I am a clinical director of a domestic violence shelter, New House KC, located in northeast. I am invested in this work. I am solution-focused. And what I mean by solution-focused is, is not so much as looking at the problems that we have here in Hickman, but actually finding some of those solutions that are needed, and actually being able to know my presence as a board member, and what it is to actually govern and to look at social policy and assist and collaborate with the superintendent to do so.
Thank you. I'm going to start this time with Mrs. Berger. The question is, what are three of the major issues that you believe our school district is currently facing? And how would you like the district to deal with those issues?
Well, I think that the three main issues would be accreditation, staff retention, and student success. And I know I've been in many meetings with the superintendent, and I know that he is diligently working on the accreditation issue with DESI, and providing the reports that they need to prove that they are worthy of accreditation. And I'm very proud of him for doing that. Staff retention, by working in the schools in the Kansas City School District, I know there are many ways to keep staff, and not all of them are monetary. The staff need to be involved in decisions that directly impact the work that they do. And that is all staff in the school district. And then, student success, I feel like the students need to be prepared for life. They, when they get out of high school, they need to be able to read well and do math and have life skills. And I think those are things that we really need to focus on. Even with the STEM programs, if a student can't read, they're not going to be successful. So I want, I know they have reading programs in the district, and they are working on that, but I would want to make sure that that continues.
Thank you. Mr. Watry?
Yes, ma'am. Can you repeat the question? I just want to make sure I'm clear.
Sure. What are three of the major issues that you believe our school district is currently facing, and how would you like the district to deal with those issues?
Absolutely. So I believe that the first issue, I think, is accreditation. Accreditation by the fact that the way in which we need to address this is the longevity of the superintendent, as well as ensuring proper and adequate board governance. The second is, the other issue in which we're facing has to do with ensuring that we are incentivizing our students to feel that they have different avenues for success. And that includes our real-world learning curriculum, our ability to provide different avenues in different areas and potential ways of learning, as well as utilizing our iReady system to actually meet students where they're at, taking a paradigm shift from traditional, traditional aspects of learning, and ensuring that it leads to the student's success by meeting them where they're at. And with the third, just ensuring that we, that we are providing community involvement. This, this issue has long been a longstanding issue with Hickman in the aspect of community engagement, ensuring that we actually incentivize our parents, our families, to be able to be involved in the processes of their treatment, as well as our teachers and staff, and providing social emotional retention for them as well.
Thank you. Mr. Carmichael?
Um, I should mention that I have a PhD.
Dr. Carmichael.
Thank you.
At any rate, I agree that accreditation is the top priority for this school district, and it does involve looking at the continuity of the leadership, as well as the cooperation of the board. And there, there's, as I viewed it, there seems to have been some dissension in that regard. That needs to be mended. The second thing, I think, oh, getting back to accreditation, the one thing that wasn't mentioned is that our student test scores need to improve. And I know that there are many different ways to measure success. Progress is one way, but there is the hard data that we need to consider. That, the math and reading particularly need elevating. I believe that we need to increase teacher salaries, because we need to be able to keep our best teachers, recruit the best teachers, and I think that improving those salaries would go a long way. And finally, I think that student, student performance, that we need to improve their environments so that learning can occur more readily.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, for the next set of three questions, we'll be dealing with questions regarding health and safety. The first question will first go to Dr. Carmichael. I'm sorry, to Mr. Watry, to Mr. Watry. As a school board member, you are responsible for health, safety of district students and staff. What is your source of guidance in these decisions? Is it the Department of Public Health, elected officials, personal research, or something else?
I believe it is, I believe the answer would be all of the above. In regards, the best example that I can, I can provide is the fact that over the, the previous year, I was the board president during the, during the flux of the pandemic. What we ensured was that we ensured that we looked at data from the Health Department. We made sure that we communicated with our local officials, even in regards of how we can stay fiscally afloat, while ensuring we're also looking at data and creating a plan that allows us to be able to try, try rate what situations that we're in. We were able to look at that data and state, based on that data, what our level of, what our level of safety was, or what our level of protection was needed when it came to the COVID virus. Additionally, I think that it's important that we do continuously have a communication with our elected officials in regards of what policies and procedures are taking place, not just at the local level, but also at the state level, to be able to ensure that any, any aspect of what is actually taking place regarding how the state or how, how the county is actually addressing any health issues or any safety issues, that we also adhere to that. And we are also communicating amongst ourselves and communicating with our administration, which is also doing the research and being able to provide that to us board members, so that we can make a decision that best effectively addresses the concern.
Thank you. Mr. Carmichael?
Um, would you rephrase, restate?
Of course. As a school board member, you are responsible for health, safety, and health and safety of district students and staff. What is your source of guidance on these decisions? Is it the Department of Health, Public Health, elected officials, personal research, or something else?
We have a whole nation of information. There's a lot of data out there from different areas of our country, and we need to consider all of it. We need to follow best practices, and those best practices will come from scientific studies. They will come from the Department of Health. We have to consider the opinions of our elected officials, and, and I think our own feelings play into this. I think Mr. Watry said all of it, but I'm data-driven, and I like to know what works and what doesn't work. And I also would, in obtaining this data, try to make it come from areas that look a little bit like us, as opposed to areas that don't. We need to make it fit our needs in this particular school district. But data would drive me. Data would drive me.
Thank you. Mrs. Berger?
Yes. Well, I would tend to agree with Mr. Watry, but I would like to add one thing. I would like to see the budget allowed for a school nurse in every building that has students, because the school nurse is so important in enforcing the safety measures for the health concerns that we have, you know, and fielding whether a student needs to be sent home, the parents need to be called, and that should not be left up to teachers or administrators to do that. I have been out in the buildings, and I have seen the great importance of the school nurse. And even in COVID, when we were at home, our nurses were put to use, you know, giving the injections to the staff and providing training and all the things that were related to COVID. So I would like to see budget allotted for school nurses in all buildings with students.
Thank you. Our next question, we will start with Mr. Carmichael. What district support is currently given for health and safety to LGBTQ students, and do you recommend any changes?
Honestly, I'm not completely sure what district support is provided for that part of our student population. I think there certainly ought to be counseling available, should it be desired. I think that those students should feel safe, as safe as any other students. They should feel safe working with whatever officials are in contact with them. But I, I just feel that this has been a growing issue that's been dealt with around the country, and I think it's being more, of more import to us lately. And I would just fully support those things that would make those students feel safe, that would provide them with the right kind of counseling, and that would enable them to function within our school successfully.
Thank you. Mrs. Berger?
Yes, I have recently visited with a teacher in the Hickman Mills School District, and she shared with me some concerns about being able to call students by the pronouns that they wish to be called. And I feel like that that is a small way that we can support the students, if we can address them in the manner that they wish to be addressed. And again, I would go back to the budget, because if we're going to provide counseling for students, we need to make sure the budget supports a counselor in every building, whether it's students, five days a week or when school is in session. So often, districts will eliminate the counseling position to a part-time position, where they'll put it in one building two days a week and another building three days a week, instead of having a full-time counselor in each building. And I think that counselors are up there at the top of being important, just like the school nurse.
Thank you, Mr. Watry.
Oh, staying within the role of a board director, as, as president, last, last January, I made sure that we had a policy that actually addressed this issue, but it addressed it on, on, on an all-inclusive, inclusive scale. Policy AC, I see, is about, is our equity policy. Now, we previously did have a racial equity policy, but I wanted, one that I, I proposed and helped develop this policy to ensure that it was very inclusive to our students. It encompasses not just our students, but also our staff, making sure that a counseling is available, making sure that we have the availability and the accessibility for professional development around the topic, to ensure that our teachers are available to, to learn more about the topic. We are, it is, it is included within our, our, our programming. It's something that is already, and as a board member, to ensure that this was able to happen, the board made sure that we had the availability and accessibility to create policy to ensure the administration had the procedural aspects to be able to spend the money, based on within the superintendent's budget, to ensure that counselors receive the education, but not just counselors, but teachers, because counselors only come in when there is a time of a problem, to be solution-focused. The people who are putting the most eyes on them at all times are their teachers, and we want to make sure that they have the education to do so as well.
Thank you. For the next question, we will start with Mr. Carmichael. After this question, we'll take a question possibly from the audience, but this is the question that we will start with now. What did our district do to support staff and student safety during the COVID-19 pandemic in the 2021 school year? What changes or modifications would you have made to the district's response to the pandemic? Mr. Carmichael?
From what I observed, the district seemed to follow the CDC guidelines regarding mask wearing, when it was appropriate to meet as a class in person with masks, when it was appropriate to operate virtually, which in, in our area, we certainly would want to make sure that every student had access to internet and computer to be able to function virtually. I think they brought the students back with great consideration and care, not wishing to cause any kind of outbreak. And when, if I recall correctly, there were at least one time, and maybe two, where students came back, and there was a cluster of cases, and they sent the students back home to a virtual environment. From what I could tell, this district behaved conscientiously to protect the students' health and also the staff and teachers' health. What they could have done differently, I think, perhaps, more information about the correct kind of masks to wear, and also more encouragement to get the vaccines and boosters when they were recommended by the CDC.
Thank you. Mr. Watry?
Glad you asked this question. So, first thing that I would ask anyone to do is to go to the website and look at the COVID-19 dashboard. One thing that we established within that year, with me as president, was the, was the aspect of creating a dashboard and collectively staying in contact with CDC information to ensure best practices, to ensure the best outcomes. We ensured that we also made sure that when the vaccine was available, that it was accessible and available to teachers, accessible and available to, that we were able to identify vaccine sites. But more, more, I could say, the biggest thing that we did was that, at the beginning of the pandemic, which no other district actually did, was create a three-step, three-tier plan that allowed us to be able to look at the data and be able to determine the level, the, the level of exposure that was necess, that was being conveyed based on what, how the community, the actual community, the area, the demographic of the area in which we, we are, and, and, and actually imply that as far as providing what steps would be taken. So, once new information was disseminated as far as what was going on with the pandemic, we were able to see exactly where we were and where that plan was going to be implied. We didn't have to touch policy or have to have the discussion about changing anything, because we had a plan in place. We were prepared.
Okay, thank you. I have on my notes that next is, is Mr. Carmichael. I believe you've already answered. Is that accurate? So, it is Mrs. Berger, please?
I don't know what I can add to that, but I, as I understand it, we also provided internet hotspots to students who did not have internet in their homes. So that would be what I would add to what the gentleman said.
Okay. Do we have any questions from the audience?
Oh, Madam Moderator, we do not have any questions from the audience at this time.
Okay, I'm going to encourage that. Anybody watching, please submit your questions. I think we've already told you what the website is. We'd like to get some questions from people watching. So the next questions will come about the budget, and we will start with Mr. Watry. First question, the supplemental budget that's part of the American Rescue Plan, which was signed into law by Governor Parsons, provides over $27 million to Hickman Mills C-1, C-1, to mitigate the effect of COVID in schools. Funds are released upon request for reimbursement. What are some of the plans for how Hickman Mills will spend it? And do you have any suggestions about how these funds can best be used?
I think these funds are best being utilized to ensure the safety and the security of the environment in which the student can possibly be in to be able to learn. We want to shore up our classes and make sure that we are taking, we are providing, we're utilizing these funds to ensure that we have classrooms that are safe, that also ensure, also making sure that we're utilizing the money or being fiscally responsible with the money and disseminating into the areas that are needed. Much to the same effect of when we had COVID, our ability to provide food for our students was, was, was not available. Our vouching, our food About uh our vouching, our food voucher system was kind of disrupted. As well as our ability for transportation, as well as our ability for virtual learning, as well as our ability for the avenues and where students are going or or need to learn differently. We we are in the middle of a paradigm shift. And the way that the district is going to utilize this money is shoring up our availability to have accessibilities to our families, much to the same effect of providing internet. Making sure that we have clear internet, making sure we have the the correct devices, making sure that we're ensuring STEM programming is available and in different various ways of being provided. As well as making sure that food and and basic needs of our families are being met. Because you can't learn in a classroom when you when you're worried about what's going on at home. We want to shore up our families.
Thank you. Mr. Carmichael.
Um, the first part of your question sort of indicated that the school board already had a plan for that money. Maybe um I'm not aware of it, but I'm aware of the money. I'm aware of where it comes from. And I'm aware of the reimbursement program. I think there are a number of infrastructure issues that need to be addressed. Uh, the quality and safety of the buildings. Um, uh, I understand some renovation is going on currently. Uh, the new concert hall and um flooring in Ruskin High School. Um, but uh I'd like to see a lot of that money go to um the the. Enabling the students to maximize their experience in the classroom and also to be able to continue that experience at home. And uh I think that there could be programs providing the internet and computer access and that sort of thing that would be very helpful. I still believe that it's necessary to recruit the best teachers, retain the best teachers. And provide development so teachers can move into that category. I also um think that um we may need to do something about having a second middle school. And some of that money will be going, I hope, to enabling that to happen.
Thank you. Mrs. Burger.
During the at home learning, many students fell behind, especially in reading and math. So I would use some of that money to hire paraprofessionals to put in some of the neediest classrooms. Where they can learn the fundamental skills or get caught up. So that the parent could help the teacher with small group learning for one on one or, you know, three on one type learning. To improve the skills and make up for what they lost during the at home learning during COVID. And we also need to support staff. I know when everybody went home, some of the teachers had a hard time with the virtual learning. Or even just computer teaching on the computer. We need to support our staff and make sure that they are very well trained in that as well. And I think we can close up some gaps um in that and using that money. And um I know in our schools, they talk about better ventilation. So if we have some of the older schools where we need to upgrade our ventilation, we could also use the money in that regard.
Thank you. So we'll start with the next question on the budget uh with Mr. Carmichael. The question is, if necessary, where would you cut the budget? What would you consider off limits to budget cuts and why?
I um am not particularly interested in budget cuts. That doesn't mean that um I'm a tax and spend advocate, but um we need to move forward and and so we need a budget that doesn't get cut. Um, I think if cuts are necessary, every program needs to be examined. Uh, not for its um intrinsic value, but rather for the um efficiency in which it's using the funds. And to try and increase efficiency and uh budget awareness. Um, I would hate to see any of the programs that currently exist in our schools um to be eliminated. Uh, I think that the stuff that occurs, of course, your mainline academic courses uh cannot be cut or affected. Uh, and then you go to your extracurricular and co-curricular activities. Yet those are some of the things that mean the most to the students, to the uh uh development of their life skills. Uh, in working with other people toward a common goal. Uh, I would just work for more efficiency and um uh uh where that would be the main thing, efficiency and budget management.
Thank you, Mrs. Burger.
Yes, um in working with the principals and administration on the budget. I would say that studying the budget and um determining what is the most important for that school year. And eliminate things like food expenditures, which is sometimes a lot. Expenditures for consultants, which, you know, maybe board and administration can make those decisions. Instead of spending thousands of dollars on a consultant, um definitely. But I would want to keep art, music and P E. I feel like they're very important and oh, and I forgot, the library. Keep the librarians because every even though everything is going to computer. I still feel like our librarians, especially at the elementary and middle school level, provide a wonderful service in. Um, piquing that interest in reading and wanting that the student wanting to check out that book because it's it's exciting. And I think the librarians do an excellent job of of selling literature and selling reading, and I would hate to see that go. But I just think that studying the budget and making good efficient use out of the money that you have. And look at the top and make sure we're not top heavy.
Thank you, Mr. Watree.
Love this question. So first thing, as a board director, you have to understand the budget as far as what it is basically our fiscal responsibility around it. Now, what I want to do is I want to draw the clock back uh to like two thousand seventeen. Two thousand seventeen, the fund balance, which board members will have to be aware of, uh is literally where we need to. Where we look at how our district is doing financially. At at the at the time, our our fund balance is about eight percent. At the same time, we were closing schools. We closed schools because we had to make budget cuts. That was our budget cut at the time. In the last couple of years, while I've served on the board, we have increased the budget, uh the fund balance from twelve percent one year to 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 about fourteen. Now, right now, where the where the budget, where the fund balance actually stands is at fifty four percent. Within my year of being president, we have, we have, we have literally made sure that we have a record fund balance. So the concept of even cutting a budget right now is invaluable. It's not, it's not even on the table. If anything, right now, we are, we have the accessibility and availability to i- improve our programs. Put more money into these schools because we have it. We have, we can shore up our programs. There is no reason to cut anything.
Thank you. The next uh area of questions concerns school board meeting policies. And we'll start with Mrs. Burger. Here is the question. In other districts, some board members have become disruptive during board meetings. If something like this were to happen when you were serving on the school board, now, how would you handle the situation?
The board members being disruptive or the people attending the board?
Either either one.
Oh, either one. Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
Right. Well, I think that if the people that attend the board meeting get disruptive, that um. The president of the board or the superintendent should address it. I don't think the whole board should jump into the fiasco and become part of the problem. That, you know, just would be unprofessional. But um and then if the board starts fighting amongst themselves, someone needs to call a timeout and um, you know, start over. And I would hope that the president of the board would be the one to manage the meeting and set the guidelines. You know, and take control of the meeting so that it doesn't get out of hand and bring it back if it does get out of hand.
Thank you, Mr. Watree.
And again, I love this question. So policy, as board members, one thing we have to, we have control over is policy. And the policy is the things that we have to adhere to. So when it comes to any disruption, when it comes to the Robert's rules, we ensure that we adhere to them. We also en- ensure we actually have decorum. By decorum, I literally mean the aspect of adhering to Robert's rules by and and adhering to policy. As president, one thing I wanted to ensure was that that the community, as well as other board members, understood that we have to adhere to policy. More particularly, we have a policy around uh audience comments. Now, i- in the last couple, in the last year, we have had disruptions with our board. I'm very transparent and and I love the aspect of accountability because we are public servants. And I say that with a capital S, a- as we serve you. So to ensure that our communities are actually being heard, we need to be able to create a platform that does. But it's through policy, policy that can be amended, suspended, or just completely removed. But it has to be done through the proper process of doing so by process. Now, when it comes to board members who interfere, who interact with each other, when it comes to law and ethics. We have policy around those ethics. And if i- if there is disruption, we must adhere to our ethics or be held accountable and it's by you.
Thank you, Mr. Carmichael.
Every board member has a responsibility to work towards consensus whenever possible. And to be civil, um and there's no excuse not to be. Um, the president uh controls this through using Robert's rules. And um every board member has the responsibility of adhering to that set of rules. Um, I don't know that any situation would get to the point where the president and the board itself would censor. A board member for a meeting because of their behavior. Um, I would like to think that wouldn't happen. I think as board members, we should be um consensus makers, peacemakers. And work with each other uh without conflict. Regarding somebody being out of place in the uh public part of the board meeting. Uh, I would think that the president, no, I know that the president should ask them to adhere to a code of conduct. That's expected of everybody who's in attendance. If the uh interruptions continue, I think the president should also be able to direct the security uh present. To escort somebody out of a meeting.
Thank you. One more question on school board meeting policies, kind of similar, but a little bit different. We'll start with Mr. Watree on this one. The Kansas City Star has recent recently reported that the Hickman Mills School Board Relations, quote, relations are fraught. This is January thirteenth twenty two. What would you do to improve board relationships, question mark? And what skills or training do you have in conflict resolution and consensus building?
There are so many ways to answer that question right now. So let's start with this. I am a, I was able to read the article in the Star. I was able to adhere to the article in the Star regarding there being disruption and dysfunction or dysregulation among board members. As a, as a, as a therapist, I validate and as a person who practices um moderation. Uh, and having history and working with our students and helping them deal with their conflicts. Actually working in an environment of uh our behavioral alternative environment. Actually use utilizing restorative practices, which are a part of our policy. The one way that we have, we can, we can actually address these issues is by using restorative practices, which is the policy in which we voted on. Restorative practices allows us to everyone to have a say and have a voice and be able to express that. But, and I mean this with a big but, I'm strong in my ability as a therapist to to validate feelings, thoughts, behaviors, expressions. But at any point that anybody's feelings, thoughts or expressions get into in in the way of the best practices that leads to the best outcomes of our students. I'm going to address it as please step aside or please get out of the way. Our students are more important than co- bittering and conflict. And we have to be held accountable and be transparent with the public so that we are held accountable. The accountability comes from the community.
Thank you. Mr. Carmichael.
Well, one thing Cecil said, I agree with wholeheartedly. If you keep in front of you the the beacon that the welfare of the students is our first concern. Everything else around it is uh should be directed uh toward that. And anything that keeps us from achieving that is very undesirable. I'm aware of the article and I am aware of some of the votings that have occurred. I'm aware of a Christmas card that occurred. Um, uh, where four board members were shown and three were absent, and I don't know the story behind that, but um. Some of the votes lined up with the board members on the Christmas card. That stuff's got to stop. That is not appropriate. It has no place in a board meeting of people working to help our students. I spent my career as a a band director. And I taught, I didn't teach classes at twenty four, I taught classes of seventy, eighty, up to two hundred and forty. And my life was built around conflict um uh resolution and management. And to get two hundred and forty people to work together to achieve a common goal. That's where I learned how to do what I do. I believe I could manage it with a school board.
Thank you, Mrs. Burger.
Yeah, yeah, I I agree with what uh Mr. Watree said and Mr. Carmichael. But the second part of your question was about your experience, and so I would like to address my experience. When I was at the Grandview School District, the teachers in the district had representation. And sat down with administration and the board to discuss salaries, benefits and working conditions. The non-teaching personnel, the classified or support personnel, whatever you want to call them, had nothing. And as a matter of fact, back then, the women positions, we did not even get paid overtime when we worked over forty hours a week. So we decided to organize and we did do that. It took us two years and I was elected president. So I was president of a union that represented all support staff. So we had to work together, you know, for the good of all support staff. And we met with administration and the school board to talk about wages, benefits and working conditions. We did that for many years before I left Grandview. And I've been on the Kansas City Federation of Teachers and School Related Personnel Executive Board and Negotiating Committees. For the ten years that I wasn't on the executive board the ten years, but on the negotiating committee. In the Kansas City School District as well, working for the common good and collaborating.
Thank you. Going to take a quick break here and ask is, do we have any questions from the audience at this time to the question sorter?
Yes, Madam Moderator, we have several questions. The first is, how do you propose to support the social and emotional well being of the staff?
Okay, we will start with that question uh with uh Mr. Carmichael.
Um, I think that uh. Uh, the emo- emotional well being of everybody on a student campus and everybody who's involved with it is is quite important. Um, for the staff, um, I'm not sure the school would be keeping counselors in place to um. Help the staff with problems, but I do think that the school and the district should be positioned. With recommendations to places where help can be received. I also believe that the staff of um of a school has to be organized and. and, and has to belong to, uh, uh, an organization that will represent their needs. That improves their overall emotional stability, I think. Um, uh, the, uh, teachers also have, um, issues. Um, they work in the classroom, and I'm not sure too many people have spent a whole lot of time visiting classrooms. But sometimes it's pretty tough, and I think teachers need support, and that support can be, um, um, off-campus but recommended by the board and supported by funding when it's needed.
Thank you, Mrs. Berger.
Yes, one thing, um, the school districts offer is the Employee Assistance Program. And I think that the district really needs to make that available to the staff. You know, not just put it in a manual someplace, but make the staff aware that it is available and what it's for. And all of the things, financial, counseling, um, the things that they can use it for, not just for mental health, but for, if you have a, a elderly parent and, you know, you have to take care of them and you don't know what to do, you can call the Employee Assistance Program. So there are a lot of things available, and we need to let the staff know that it's available. But also I have seen that the school nurse is a valuable resource also for the staff. You know, um, when they have problems, they can go to the school nurse. And the, that again, needs to be, you know, presented to the staff. But the school districts are really good about providing professional development for the, especially the teachers. You know, but, and whatever day they do it on, in Kansas City, it was on Wednesdays. Instead of doing professional development every Wednesday, maybe one Wednesday a month, they get that time to just leave early and go home and take care of their, run their errands, you know, just take it easy. Everybody go out for a drink somewhere, you know, together. But there needs to be opportunities for the staff to get together to collaborate and talk about what is going on in their lives and at their job.
Thank you, Ms. Watree.
So I'm gonna cover some other questions that you asked within this question. So as far as teacher retention is concerned, social emotional is important. It is important that we have retention for our teachers. In doing so, within the last year, we have increased both, both our, our, all of our staff, we have rate, we have already provided raises. Raises that compete with K, with the KC metro area to ensure that we have the availability and accessibility to compete, especially when it comes to teachers, uh, who are out, especially during COVID. Ensuring that when we actually are utilizing our substitute, uh, using Kelly Services, that we are incentivizing, uh, those to be paid as well. But also additionally, making sure that we're, we're in a competitive rate, so we are there right now. That's one. So two, we do have nurses in every school, um, but not necessarily every building, but every school available and accessible to address, especially with the COVID pandemic. But additionally, we also have nurses that are also following up with teachers when it comes to their more, their physical health, uh, or checking in when it comes to, uh, COVID. Now, last twenty seconds, I'll explain this. EAP is not enough. We do have the EAP that's available, but when we talk about professional development, we need to actually incentivize psychoeducation as well as providing other avenues because we do have the funds to be able to provide more assistance with teachers and actually being an emotional and social support. But the primary reason why I want to say that is because it needs to be outside of the realms of EAP. It needs to be inductive of the actual administration to provide it for teachers.
Here. Do we have any questions from the audience? Question sorter.
Yes, Madam Moderator, the next question is, how do you view alternative learning?
And that will go to Mrs. Berger.
Oh, I'm glad you asked that. When I worked for the Grandview School District, we had the, um, Grandview Alternative School. And it was a huge success. And the students there were so excited about being able to go in that environment and learn, but not in a structured classroom, that they could get interested in learning how to read and doing the math. And, and they had the smaller class size, so they felt like that, and they were, truly, um, cared about by the staff at the alternative school. So I see that as a very successful program, and I think that it really needs to be, um, extended and supported.
Thank you, Mr. Watree.
Yes, so, um, administrative, policy and administrative procedure IF, uh, uh, AP dash AP one, uh, the district will review and revise written curriculum on a rotating basis. So what that does is that allows us to be able to, within this policy also, we have, as board members, we have looked at policy and saw about real world, world learning curriculum and creating alternative way of learning to, to get away from this traditional mindset that all of our students are, are geared towards going to college. But are more towards actually looking into trade, looking into different avenues where they can receive certification. Now, when it comes to their ability to learn, this also allows availability for them to get credit while being, uh, while getting, being able to learn through their different intelligence in which they do. As a, as a clinician, I know that we have different forms of intelligence, whether it be emotional intelligence, kinesthetic intelligence, where we're talking about bo- uh, body movement, muscle memory. But all of these things are taken into account when it comes to alternative learning. Additionally, when it, the, uh, alter, behavioral alternative program before it moved to birth, uh, strongly emphasized restorative practices even before the district had actually started, where they had gotten, uh, school discipline. They reduced, uh, suspension at the Behavioral Alternative School sixty percent, where you're talking about triple digits down to single digits. So that.
Thank you, Mr. Carmichael.
I'm not, um, completely aware of the alternative learning programs available in the Hickman Mills School District. I assume they're, they are there, and I'm a quick study, and we'll, um, find out what they are, uh, very quickly. Um, but I know that there are multiple intelligences. I know that not every student learns the same way. I know that some students have great difficulty learning in a large classroom setting. Some students need one-on-one or small group attention. Um, I would subscribe to a, a, a program, um, and a curriculum that would utilize, um, multiple ways of approaching the students' need to learn and their ability to learn. Um, I guess that's alternative education. Um, uh, one of the things that is really important is that we also learn, uh, n- not everybody's gonna go to college. Some people are gonna go into trades, and that's by choice and not necessarily by intelligence. I believe every student has the capacity to be extraordinarily capable. But, um, it's important that we also teach students to function socially.
Thank you. Now we're gonna go back to another area, uh, this one is curriculum. And the first question, uh, we'll start with Mr. Carmichael. And it is, what information? Let me double check this just a minute. No, um, the first one actually, we'll start with Mr. Watree. I thought that was unusual. Uh, what information should be taught and at what grade levels about the less honorable part of our history, such as slavery and the treatment of Native Americans?
Sorry, did you say when?
I'll say, say it again. What information should be taught and at what grade levels about the less honorable part of our history, such as slavery and the treatment of Native Americans?
As soon as we start teaching history. So what, i- in the grade levels in which we start teaching history, that's when we start teaching it. There are availability and accessibility to resources to be able to provide this within our curriculum. And, and may I please state for the record, when it comes to the aspect of being very transparent about our history, it is something that needs to be provided to our students because they're the, going to be the ones that create the change that happens that, so that history doesn't repeat itself. So when we talk about what needs to be taught, some of the, some of the aspects of how we're addressing the, uh, the history of it is by making sure that we're just speaking to it transparently. The information that needs to be, that needs to be provided at, at the age range that it is, is upon the aspect of any student wanting even to know the history of Hickman Mills. They, we, we would want, as people look at Hickman Mills, I would want them to look at a transparent aspect of what has happened over the years in Hickman Mills in regards of, of, of how, how we are where we are right now. We want to ensure that our students have a historical, uh, account, but we want to make sure that we're not revising history so that we're not giving false information and sending them off to failure in the future. So the que- to answer your question as soon as possible, a- and in upon what needs to be taught, the transparency of it, just everything is transparent about it.
Thank you, Mr. Carmichael.
I agree. I think as soon as history is being taught, those subjects need to be broached. And they need to be broached honestly. Now, I'm sure that different textbooks have different views. Um, and that you might be able to color or shade or make something gray by the textbook that you choose or by the truth that you, uh, decide to accept. But I think the truth needs to be the, um, corroborated truth that's been gathered up over the last, uh, decades, um, a- about everything that's happened. I'm horrified by, um, many of the stories I hear about slavery, slavery. I'm equally horrified by the treatment of Native Americans. Um, uh, I think the only thing that might, um, be considered as the information's presented is the degree of brutality or, um, graphicness that's involved. Um, I do think that it would be nice to include moments of kindness when they were shown in the instruction, uh, because some people did try to intervene.
Thank you, Mrs. Berger.
Yes, um, Mr. Carmichael talked about, um, the books, the curriculum. And I think that as a district, as a board, you know, the committee that's picking out the curriculum needs to be very careful. Because we, Texas is a huge, and nothing against Texas, but a lot of the curriculum comes out of one state. You know, and so I think that you have to have review committees in your districts to actually read the material, you know, and not just listen to the salesman to make sure that it does cover factual, um, historical data, you know, and in a manner for the age level. You know, because like he was saying, you, you know, you can't have all the graphic violence, say, at the third grade level. But maybe in high school, they would more understand that. But also you need to support, you know, um, literature by, um, the Black community and, you know, the, um, Indian community, all communities. You know, um, there are many women, you know, what women, the history of women. There, there's all kinds of history that should be included, and it needs to be factual because we do not want to repeat our history, and we want to grow and be better and work as one, not divi- not divided.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna be running short of time. I'm gonna skip to the next category. We have had one now from curriculum. We will skip the others and go into current bills in Missouri Legislature that affect the board. Uh, the first question, uh, will go to Mr. Watree. Um, in the Missouri Legislature, there is a parental bill of rights bill. Have you studied this bill, and how do you interpret, quote, parental bill of rights, end quote?
Um, hmm, I have, uh, studied this bill somewhat. Um, and the, the concept of this bill being the fact that, uh, parents have the right to choose where their children go to school. Um, and, uh, what that, I feel that there's more of an insidious nature when it comes to this bill, when especially when it comes to the, uh, educational savings accounts, uh, that they're also being, uh, that are also being applied with this. The concept that it would literally take away from public education and keep publica- and, and it would take tax- taxpayer dollars away from, uh, the, the accessibility and availability for receiving, uh, adequate education. What we do know in regards of the parental bill of rights, or not so much as that, but what we do know when it comes to the data in which that should be provided when actually discussing this, is that both charter schools and private schools also have the same identical achievement gap that is presented within public schools. And what public schools allows us to do is to be able to actually have the community that is actually paying those incentives to regulate and have a say. It, districts like, like Hickman, um, are, are very, um, it, it is predatory to us, and it's predatory because of the fact that it is under the assumption that parents aren't necessarily ta- paying attention to the district so they can just send their kids elsewhere. But is actually, it actually needs to incentivize students, uh, parents to actually be involved and, and be more involved with the district and which they're a part of right now.
Thank you, Mrs. Berger.
Yes, I am a firm believer in public education, and that public education must be supported financially. And if charter schools and private schools are permitted to bleed money from the pri- public schools, how are public schools going to be able to support facilities and staff to educate the children of our community? I believe that private school is a choice made by parents and guardians. And that if they want to send their student to private school, and I was part of sending my grandson to Catholic school, and my great nephews go to a Catholic school, and, you know, their parents pay, that is their choice to do that. But I, they should pay for that. But we as people that pay taxes and support the public and our communities should support public education for all students, whether they're learning dis- disabled, behavior-disabled, um, exceptional learners, or just average learners. They all must get the support of public education, and without those funds, we are unable to do that. So, public money needs to stay in public schools. And if they looked at charter schools' test scores, if people actually went and looked at those test scores and compared them to the public school in the same district, they would find that a lot of them are at or below the same level as the public school in that district. They're all not better.
And then we'll go, uh, yes, to Mr. Watree.
No.
No, I'm sorry, Mr. Carmichael. Mr. Carmichael, yes, thank you.
I pointed like he's right next to me.
I, um, I think one of the most beautiful things about our country is the public school system. I believe it is, uh, one of the cornerstones of democracy, equality, freedom, and, and so many of the values we hold dear. And yet, uh, politics becomes involved. And people who speak loudly are heard, and oftentimes people who are not professionals in education make decisions based upon political expediency rather than what's best for the students. Right now, there are over a hundred and twenty bills in front of the Missouri legislators regarding education. Several of these bills, um, are dealing with, uh, the Parents' Bill of Rights and what can and cannot be taught in the classroom. Now, that's being decided in legislature, um, by people who might be doctors, lawyers. They're, they're certainly smart enough to get elected and, uh, but they're not trained in education. Um, uh, people do have choices, and I think that's consistent with American values. And they can send their student or, uh, to a, a private school if they wish, but the But the public schools represent the core of democracy.
Thank you. Thank you. We will have time for at the most two more questions, so we're going to skip ahead a little bit. We have time for one more question from the audience. Do we have one? Question sorter?
Yes, Madam Moderator. We do have another question. It is, what is your view on how school discipline should be handled?
And this will go to Mrs. Berger.
One of my favorite sayings at, especially Southeast High School was, don't make a rule if you don't want to enforce it. The students at the high school knew in a two-week period whether a rule was going to be enforced or not. And if it wasn't, they just ignored it, you know? And so I think that districts had to be very careful about what they decide is a rule and how it's going to be disciplined against. And one of the chief problems I know that we had there was the use of phones in the classroom. And we ended up getting yonder bags so that when the students came in in the morning, they had to put their phone in the yonder bag and lock it up, you know? And then they could get it unlocked at the end of the day. But, and if they were caught with their phones, we had a list of rules, like the first time it would just get taken away till the end of the day, the second time the parent or guardian would be called. And the third time, they wouldn't be able to bring their phone the rest of the year. So I think that you have to have good rules, and I think that you have to abide by those rules so that you can avoid the discipline problems and keep everybody in the classroom and in a learning environment.
Thank you. Mr. Watree?
This is actually my favorite question. A lot, a lot of times, and this has been, I've agreed a lot with my counterparts, with my colleagues. I take a solution-focused approach and not so much as punitive or problem-focused. And that, and what I've seen in schools and with my experience working at behavioral alternative, also as a child therapist. And I guess as a board member, the school discipline is often looked at as to be punitive. And it often pushes kids to look like me out. And it sets up parameters around pushing them out to literally kind of almost mirror the school-to-prison pipeline. We often know that prisons are built based on testing scores. So with that being said, we need to move away from punitive and move towards restorative. Now, I'm not saying that anything, the laws, the policies and the procedures that are in place matter. But what I did was, is I spent time with the school, with the Associate Superintendent of Student Services to ensure that there was availability for restorative practices to play in, because it's considered the best practices when it comes to community building. When you build a community, you can address the discipline issues. And you don't necessarily have to put in punitive implementations of those to ensure, to ensure success with your students. And it doesn't push them out. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Carmichael?
You're muted.
Carmichael?
Mr. Carmichael, you're muted.
Can you hear me?
There we go. I taught in the public schools for 13 years, and during that time, I spent a lot of, I was very careful to construct a code of student contact conduct based upon the input of student leadership. And when the student leadership had input, they also had ownership. Now, we talked about the effect of any particular recommendation they made and what the consequences would be. I avoided punitive. The worst possible thing you can do to a student in any classroom is take away the subject matter. And that means taking the student sometimes out of the classroom, and that doesn't help them move forward in their life. Occasionally, it will be necessary to do that, but would like to avoid it. But student involvement in the rules. And from my observation, walking into classrooms around the area lately, students looking at phones is a terrible thing. I mean, multiple students in classrooms looking at phones and nothing being done to address that. And I know that there are rules in place, and Ms. Berger was exactly right about a rule that isn't enforced within two weeks is going to be broken all year long. She's right.
Thank you. We're coming near the end here. It's time for your two-minute closing remarks. Take a moment to gather your thoughts, and I want to thank the audience for your thought-provoking questions and your tentativeness to the answers. Remember, this forum will be archived on the League's website, L W B K C dot org. And now for our candidates' closing remarks. And within those remarks, will you also tell us a little bit about a teacher who made an important influence on your life that make that a smaller part of it? And we will start in this case with Mr. Watree.
Future influence on my life. So when I, I was usually catered to that question by looking at my youth or looking at even so much as my undergrad or graduate experience, whether it be through my mentorships. But my teacher experience actually has to do with my availability to work with the teachers at Hickman. I've worked with, I've worked with teachers and principals from Ms. T., who teaches art at Burke. Just, just the fact that they have influenced me and being able to show me a way that it doesn't have to be done in a traditional sense. Also that we don't have to continue to do things the way that we have done them over time, assuming that this traditional paradigm of what education is can't look different, that we can't be innovative. The idea of actually, the implementation process is supposed to be about actually assessing, evaluating, implementing, and then scaling up, ensuring it. When I look at the teachers that we have in this district right now, the most prominent experience that I've had kind of comes from this, from them. I would speak about Ms. Schmidt at Urban at this point. Ms. Schmidt works with our, for lack of a better term, what they refer to as littles. And what I've seen her do is I've seen her actually take the time in the precision and actually being able to actually ask for assistance and help and support. But when she feels good, the kids feel good. And when your teachers feel good and your teachers feel confident, because most of our teachers started in this district with passion, not with pay, with passion. And the ones that, the ones that we have retained are the most passionate people that I know. They're the ones who influenced me to be in this space. They're the reason why I'm a board member today.
Thank you. Mr. Carmichael?
I'm honored to run for school board in this district, and I'm hoping that my 44 years of educational experience and teaching in classrooms will serve me well as I try to serve the welfare of the students, the educational welfare. They've got lots of welfare needs, but the educational welfare is what we're supposed to do. We're supposed to prepare them with the skills necessary to succeed in life, to be able to improve the circumstances that they may find themselves in as children. Maybe do better than their parents did. I think that's a worthy goal, and it's up to us to instill those feelings in these students, even though they may have been brought up in a way where those feelings are foreign. I had one really important teacher. And oddly enough, it was at the end of my undergraduate, I was student teaching with him. His name was Louis Jones. And I watched the love he had for the students, the care he felt for them. But his insistence on teaching the subject matter and doing it effectively, he really made a difference. And I have to cite the many students who made a difference in my life. Recently, one of my high-performing students just passed his 50th birthday. He succeeded me at the University of South Florida. And he's been an enormous influence on how I felt about my teaching. He was a, he was confirmation, and I think we all need that. There is no better occupation than teaching people skills and values.
Thank you. Mrs. Berger?
I forgot to say one thing. My daughter was a public school teacher in high school for 18 years. So I would like to say that she's the teacher that influenced me the most, but she's not. But she was a great high school teacher, and her students loved her. She taught biology, chemistry, and anatomy. But the teacher that influenced me the most was Bill Engel at Longview Community College. I went to college to be a nurse and took accounting, and that was the end of nursing school for me because he made me love accounting. So I had to go and take all the accounting classes and make that my life's career. And that's how I ended up at the Grandview School District, in the Board of Ed office, working in the accounting office. And there, I worked with, like I said, the Assistant Superintendent of Budget and Finance, but I also provided board docs for all of the board meetings, did the end-of-the-year DUC reports, and any other thing that needed to be done. But in Kansas City, I worked in the buildings. And one of the things that we were talking about, and I didn't really address was, is that several times I sat in on a circle for restorative justice because at the high school at Southeast, we had started, that program was started. And, you know, as part of my job, it was to find the curriculum and the items that they needed to make their program successful. So I was involved in that in the very beginning and really got to know a lot of the students that way and enjoyed my time, always my time with the students, and learned a lot. And I just hope that I can be, get on the board and use my accounting background and my school budget background, you know, to help the staff and students be successful.
Thank you. And again, thank you, candidates, for your willingness to participate in this forum. It will soon be available, like I said, in the League website for anybody that didn't have an opportunity to see it, or if you'd like to see it yourselves. Please take time to share the insight you have gained tonight with your family and friends. And be sure to get out to the polls on Tuesday, April 5. And thank you and good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.